Public session. I'd like to call on Dick Royer. I've been following your art work, having great deal of success with it. Congratulations on that. If you'd be able to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
The flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic of America. One nation, one home. In the name of the Constitution and the Constitution of Justice.
I can move on. Under public announcement, it's not too early to get everyone in the spirit with the case of Cave Creek. That'll take place on October fourteenth and fifteenth at State Coach Village. That's a Wednesday and a Thursday. Call the public.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to note that the museum had a wonderful celebration of the past of Cave Creek. They wonderful dinner had heralds. The prime rib was incredible and the stories and people that had lived here for many years was incredible. Wonderful practice.
I now understand that the historic deck of cards that you were involved in is now part of Cave Creek.
Yes, Mr. President. It's missing the King of Hearts. Individual has that.
You never could tell about those Kings Town Manager. Call the public.
No reports.
Counsel.
Thank you. I'm here for the 92%. I have an input on a thing that happened with Cave Creek. On the day after Bike Week in 2014, when the vendors were removing their sales space at the tap house parking lot, I went and asked a couple of vendors that were packing what they paid to be a vendor, a tap house for the Bike Week. The first vendor I talked to said they were a sponsor and their booth space came with sponsorship. The second vendor I talked to said they had paid $2,000 for the week. They had an area of 20 foot by 30 foot. He also said that they had had great sales. I did not ask how much. In the following week after Bike Week, I met with the town manager, who informed me with what I had found and asked the following questions. Does the town get the rental tax for the rental of the booths? He did not know. Does the town require all vendors to have a Cave Creek tax license for sales taxes? He would look into it to this day. He has not followed up to that. I have talked to Marshall Stein about this and found the following. Tap House does the following. When permitted, a permit to close off the lane on Cave Creek Road that is paid to the town is $500. Tap House does pay for the barricades and law enforcement separately. Special use permit fee of $100 for a total of $600. In return, Tap House gets to charge for their parking lot for vendors 20 foot by 30 foot is $2,000 and presumably no tax collection. This times a guess of 40 vendors is $80,000. Even at 25 vendors, it's $50,000. The town citizens get nothing but headaches. I ask where's the equality for closing down or lowering the traffic in the town when the tap house parking lot for parts of ice along with other business parking lots in town? As a citizen of Cave Creek, in order to get back from Samus Barbershop during Bike Week, which is, as you know, is at State Coach Village to my home out at Spur Cross, I drive around to the south side of Bike Mountain. I have to take as much as 30 to 35 minutes, usually about 15 to 20, to drive through town. And it's quicker and safer to just go another way. Please consider this input from a concerned citizen. Thank you. The other two things I had on this, how many businesses in the town benefit and how many suffer? Thank you for letting me present.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Kerry.
I have no other speaker.
Does anyone else wish to speak? Call the public to sit. Okay, council going to proceed. Town manager, anything? On to the consent agenda this evening. Motion to approve the five items on consent, council?
No.
All those motions made and seconded, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes are in the ballot. Okay, we're going to move agenda item number nine up to number one. Ms. Kerry and I set the agenda and sent it out and the document out the first thirty-nine agenda. So, number nine is council discussion and approval of the temporary revocation of the license agreement between the town of Cave Creek and the roadhouse related to use the town and public continual agreement slash right of way. Anything from staff?
Mayor in conference. It came to our attention sort of a period of time that the Highway Roadhouse located at 6900 East Cave Creek Road instructed a patio from the town spread or outdoor patio. We did it without permit and had the town engineer issue a letter to cease and desist on that project. That letter has expired. Had discussions with the owners of the particular business and I gave them the opportunity to come for the council before I took them the action. I had a discussion with the council on how to proceed with this. The reason I did that was this is not a small sign or a light. It's a considerable structure, considerable expense to everybody. And I thought it was only fair for them to have that opportunity for you to just apply or give us direction, how you want us to proceed with this particular interaction. I know the owners are here and I'm asking to trust you and to hear your opinion.
Okay, before I go to the owners, just to understand the two points clearly, the structure was built without, they needed a permit, that did not get a permit, and the crushers and the towns wanted a way?
Yes.
Overall, correct. Okay, thank you. Mr. Bradshaw? Are you open? Turn it on.
Mayor Vice Mayor, council. My name is Jim O'Toole. I'm a resident of Cave Creek for approximately thirty years. I am the owner of 6900 East Cave Creek Road. Leading up to this structure that we're talking about, we took out a permit for building garage doors that lead out to this area, which a portion of this is, of course, needed to the roadhouse. With that, we also upgraded our liquor license. And with that liquor license and with the approval of the council, we took over the right to serve alcohol all the way along this new constructed patio. So, this was done, what I believe, with the knowledge of the council and the town because we did add the liquor license to have this area as usable. We were told that this was in violation, but what we believed we built was a removable area more landscaping than anything else. Now, to serve liquor out there or anything the way that it was, it would have been unsafe going out of those doors because of the angle. So, we did raise it up with the existing dirt that was there and put papers that are removable. We also agreed that at any point this could be refoldable and we would agree to pay for the use of that property. That's where we're at.
Questions from council? Councilman McGuire.
Are you in agreement that you believe your liquor license extends onto town property?
I believe the liquor license extends out to the south of our property, yes. Outside of our garage doors on the property.
On your property or on town property?
I believe it's on town property.
Councilor, question. Do you have any evidence of approval from the liquor board or did you submit a schematic or some drawing?
Yes, we did, and it was approved by council and by the liquor board.
And it was on the consent agenda? Is that correct?
I don't recall, however.
So, what did you get back from the liquor board that said you could have permission to do that?
I believe, Rick, you have a copy of that?
I don't have a copy of it, but the, it's the whole draw diagram. We have to, required by the liquor board, draw the diagram so we have a whole patio on the south side.
Excuse me, let this speak to the microphone.
Rick's all manager of Highway and Roadhouse. When I submitted the liquor permit to get our six license, you have to put a full schematic up there, which I had drawn on the one side of the patio on there, and also the new extension patio out the front going into the parking lot area, which we approved for too. So, both of those were on there. Obviously, it was, I believe, one through agenda here where you had to approve it just like you just did with the last one for Brian. And it was approved, and that's why we thought, I mean, we knew that we had the garage doors because they're already approved with our permit with that, which is coming out on the patio.
So, you did submit something to the liquor board if you don't have that option to change?
Correct. I have it, we have it back at the place, but yes, they sent it back to us.
We never see.
Yeah.
Because you have two access points to that patio, one in front?
Correct.
And then the new doors are removed?
Correct.
New.
Yes, we have, that's already required by the liquor board. So, you have to draw up a whole diagram of the whole servable areas that you're serving alcohol in.
And you're saying that the liquor board, I'm not going to put words in your mouth, sir, that the liquor board has approved you to serve alcohol on the patio?
Correct. They have. Yes.
Tell I.
I just may have one. I have a couple of questions. Were you, either of you gentlemen speaking at the roadhouse, involved in asking for the variance?
We can't hear you.
Involved in asking for the variance from the right of way in order to not move the tank that's out in front of your place about two months ago?
Rick, what, the tank?
The monument, the water tank. You guys asked for a variance of the right of way in order to account for that monument being in the right of way, correct?
Correct.
That was prior to constructing the porch, correct?
I believe the problem, I believe the problem was not with right of way. The problem was with height.
Did you ask for a variance of the right of way? For the tank, prior to building the porch?
We asked for a variance. I do not believe it was for right of way. I believe it was for height and because we replaced an original sign that was hit by a car and destroyed.
Were you aware that you were encroaching into the right of way when you built the porch?
No. Because it was a utility easement and we believed, we'd spoken with people from the town, and there was an agreement, if it was temporary, and we agreed to tear it out, that it wouldn't be a problem.
Who gave you permission to build the porch in the Cave Creek Road right of way from town?
We spoke with Peter, the town manager, and we talked about it, that it would have to be removable. And Mark Bradshaw has talked to other people in the town.
Other than Peter, you know?
I don't.
So, you're saying that the town manager gave you permission to build that porch in the town right of way?
No, I did not say that. I said he was aware of what we were talking about doing, and that's why we knew it was utility easement, and that's why whatever would go up would have to be removable at our cost and at any time utility companies or anybody wanted it done.
Did you get a permit to build the porch?
We did not.
Additional questions of the others? Town manager?
On my defense, I never give approval for building or constructing the town property right of way. We have a property that's under the power. So, it's a disrepresentation saying that I gave permission to build that to the town right of way. And I would not know if that was a construction, it was on utility easement. We had that discussion, we moved right of way. So, that's the representative. I gave permission for that to be built up because I never did.
I never said you gave permission to have that built, but we did talk about that it was an easement for utilities, and if anything was done, it would have to be removable. So, you did not give me authority to do that, and I didn't say that.
Councilor, has a question. Sir, why would you build a permanent structure on top of a utility easement that's in existing right of way on the February 17th?
It's not a permanent structure. It's papers that just pop right out. It's on sand. And the outside wall is back of a block. It's all landscaping. It's normal to a backyard.
So, as a follow-up question prior to building this, how wide is that patio? How much, have you got tables out there, chairs?
There was no patio except for the east patio when this patio was built.
So, it's all wood?
Yes.
It has tables and chairs and stuff. How wide is it? Yes.
Ten feet.
Thank you.
Give or take, and the tables are not permanent. They just move around.
Additional questions? Just on clear. Is, are you saying that you built this structure with out of proper permit and knowing it would turn up, it would be built on someone else's property? Am I understanding or am I not?
You are, I understood it as a utility easement where no permanent structure could be put on it. And being, we had the liquor license that covered that area, doing landscaping, it should have been okay on the thing. And if we agreed to tear it apart, if utilities need to come through, we're more than happy to do that at our expense.
Okay. Anything else you want to add?
No.
Okay, thank you. There's other comments on agenda item number nine? Ms. Kerry? Does anyone wish to speak? Come on.
Katja Kinsel, Echo Canyon Drive, Cave Creek citizen. I've known these people for many years. They would never do anything outside of regulation, and I believe they are doing it with, without knowing that they are putting something on a right of way. I happen to know Jim O'Toole and what he does for a living, and he would never do something like this without understanding the implications. And so, I guess some of your questions are like, why are, why are you so questioning him about what he's done when there are other things in town that go on without impunity? Like, I'm sorry, the ARS, the unmarked report shop in our neighborhood. Thank you.
The reason for the questions is that's what is before the council. This is the matter before the council. You wanted to speak, sir?
Sure. My name is Mike Schneider. I live on Echo Canyon. And I happened to go over to the roadhouse one afternoon when they were, they had already finished the patio. They were finishing up some work over there. And as I looked at it, the area that we're talking about here, so we're clear, there's a sidewalk that goes along their bar and continues through the town. That area was granite with miscellaneous plants. What I saw done, and I happen to be a commercial builder, commercial landscaper, I saw what they did. They put temporary block, landscape block there at 816th, and they ran it, and where this granite planter was, they added rows of block, made it flat, and then added a 10-foot strip. He's about right. That's a good estimate. A 10-foot strip of papers on top of it. So, if you built the wall up, I'd say probably two foot, and then you put papers on it. Okay? So, if he was to take that back out, he's going to take the 10-foot out and it's just going to be old landscape again. So, this right of way going back and forth, I would think it currently was landscape with granite. What's on it now is temporary block with temporary papers on top, the same area. It wasn't poured concrete. It wasn't stem wall. It was not a weight-bearing wall or anything like that. I've lived in the town many, many, many years. I've gone through the permit process several times myself. To me, as I glanced at it, it didn't look as if, and I'm not here to say I know anything about permit, but it was temporary. What he put up was temporary, and the walkway along there for what space he took since they were encroaching on Cave Creek property or somebody else's property right there, it was landscape before. All there is now is block, papers. So, to add something to that, if I could add a little to it, it would just be that. It was landscape. Now, it's a built-up and it's usable. So, permit and all the permits that I've done before, that to me didn't seem as if he would have had a co-permit or something like that because it was such a temporary thing. So, I didn't want you guys to think that there was concrete poured or anything permanent. So, don't know if that adds to anything, but it was old landscape. Now, it's a beautified landscape. So, that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Schneider. Yes, sir.
Ron McGee, resident of Cave Creek. First of all, I would like to find out what the differentiation is between the town property utility easement, because I understand that several years ago, that several feet of each commercial property all along Cave Creek Road was gifted for beautification and not is actually the utility easement going through the city core. So, there is a sidewalk that is already poured there, so everything on the north side of that. I don't know what the footage, I haven't seen the plans, but what I'd like to find out is, is there a legal utility easement from the center of Cave Creek Road to a certain point of the property when all of these properties, all the commercial buildings were built? And then after that, then the businesses were gifted a certain portion of each property through town for beautification and landscape improvement. So, I want to, I'd like to know if that, if that part of the property that's on the north side of the sidewalk is part of the gifted beautification project and not actually in the utility easement? If we could, you know, if we could clarify that somehow, are they actually putting it on utility easement or is it on the gifted property that is landscape beautification project?
Hi, good evening. My name is Mary Elrod, and I'm on 49th Street. My family's family has been here since 1951. I've been blessed to live in this town for 12 years. I actually have a question for all council members. Has any of you visited the site? And I mean, every time I go there, I see the improvements that they made and how it contributes to a nicer area. And also, I think that this is going to bring revenue to our town. Okay? So, we, we, what they've done. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Howard. Yes, sir.
Kevin Price, general manager of the roadhouse. I just wanted to step up for a second and say that the bottom line here for us is, we didn't do this maliciously. We weren't creating something that we thought was going to be a problem for the town or was going to be any kind of an eyesore. We had further plans to beautify even further, putting small baby palms and different things out there. So, it is more of a landscape looking structure. We're just starting. We've been making a lot of renovations. It's been rough, you know? We're working, we're doing what we do. Ultimately, we do feel that this is something that the town will benefit from in the long run. We think it's a good looking structure, not something that's terrible over the drive-by. Everybody, everybody looks, takes a second look, they stop, they come in, yeah, they come into our establishment, but they enjoy it. There's a beautiful mountain view from that easement now. It's just a good structure. I think it benefits everyone in the long run, and hopefully you guys will agree with that because it's a good thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Price. Public comment is still open on agenda item number nine.
Good evening, councilwoman Tracy Casali. I represent Cave Creek Pro Rodeo, Cave Creek, Arizona. I'm not going to pretend to know all the ins and outs of item number nine, but it did, a light bulb went off in my head. The rodeo purchased a storage shed. It's housed on Megan Mine property, and we got turned in to planning and zoning because we didn't have a permit. We didn't know we needed a permit. I would have never kept on something like that, but in all the trips downtown and having to figure out what went wrong, it's over 200 square feet. It requires a permit. We purchased it, paid the fines. So, I guess the point I'm making is, I don't know if, we weren't, the rodeo wasn't trying to do anything wrong. We didn't know there was something wrong, and we fixed it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Casali. Public comment is still open on agenda item number nine. Mayor? Yes, Mr. Price.
Just a couple of things, hearing all the comments. I agree, it looks nice. It looks great. The fact is, is that, from what I was hearing, is it sounds like if I had a liquor license and draw a schematic on my property, I can go ahead and, that would give me a building permit to build in the right of way in the town Cave Creek. That's what I heard to start. Secondly, I know it's not permanent, but if you go down there, there are rails that are up to keep people from falling off the edge into the walkway. I believe that the rails, I don't know, but I think they would probably have to fall under some kind of design. but I think they would probably have to fall under some kind of design criteria and have to be permanent. We'd have to ask the best about that. Especially for step, walkways, steps, things like that. But it seems to me that there should have been permanent. I've heard a couple of other things going on. And I know a couple of years ago, the lights went up on the property and parked them off. And I know the town address getting them to remove the lights. The poles still remain. The footings are still in as it was. In order for lights to go up, there'll have to be, obviously, engineered drawings for those footings that are underneath there in order for those poles to stay in place. It's just one other instance on this property where things are just done, and then we ask for forgiveness later. I hear there's a possibility of an outdoor stage. It's been in MHS Magazine, it was printed in there. There was a comment from, I don't know if that's coming, but you might want to be ahead on that, Keith. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Price. Public comment is still open. No more public comment? Then I'll move this back to council.
We need a motion to get started. Vice Mayor, you want to have a motion? I need that we direct our staff, the town manager, and our council to take whatever steps are necessary to, with due haste, to cite the owner of this property for, one, a town code violation, seeking daily fines and a cease and desist order. And two, cite them for a right-of-way encroachment. And to take those steps immediately. But I specifically state for the record, this motion does not include making any steps to conform to permit, but rather that all construction and use of the property cease and desist immediately, and that we cite those two citations and we take this to court. Second motion, have the mayor second, Vice Mayor. You know, I just, I'm going to, as I listen to the business owners here, I hearken back to a few years ago when they were talking about putting a little, just a little area on the outside of the hideaway. They were just going to park a whole half a dozen or so motorcycles and just, you know, let us, let us just sell a little. We're just, it's just going to be almost a drive-up place. It's not going to be any real business done in the hideaway. But that's not really the point. The point is, if they didn't know that this was a right-of-way and all they had to do was apply for a permit and the town would have passed them. So saying that we were ignorant that we needed a permit on a major thoroughfare in Cave Creek, sort of speaks to the problem. As far as I have been told, and I believe it is accurate, there is in fact an encroachment. We were here, I think about a month and a half ago, because there was a complaint by a neighbor at a meeting with the mayor about a small, nice family in Cave Creek that had some encroachment into the right-of-way that we were never going to develop as a road. And it was demanded by citizens of this town that we brought to council, and the mayor put it on, and we directed the family to remove the encroachments to the right-of-way. What's good for, you know, a non-commercial resident of Cave Creek who doesn't make a lot of money, certainly should be also good for businesspeople who don't follow the rules, don't get permits, and... And as I listened to the business owner, it became clear that cease and to do business on that porch and removing it is no big deal, because it's just landscaping. So, maybe we have a smaller problem than we envision.
Counsel, would that serve you at the second?
Well, I guess I agree with everything the Vice Mayor said, and I'm pleased to know that it is not a total permanent structure and can be disassembled. My concern is this liquor license thing came to us without a drawing. I have no idea if it has been approved by the elector board. You say it has, and I believe you. But we don't have any evidence of that. And as the Vice Mayor mentioned, some things in the past have occurred with this property. The lighting issue and the fact that you've already had an accident up there. I think it's time to rein you in and ask you to conform to the regulations in the small-town Cave Creek.
Counselman Bunch?
I'm cursed with seeing both sides of everything. I know exactly where they've got that patio out there. But it enhances business, it makes it look good. We've got the people walking through town. People want to come to town and walk through it. It makes it look lively, it makes it look, look, makes people want to go to. The downside is, we're calling it a utility easement. We indeed, according to the maps and the guides, it is right-of-way, which means it's the town's property. Which means that with the extension of premises going on there, and we have people that are drinking on town property, making us liable. At a minimum, I, first of all, I don't believe I'm going to support the motion. I think there's other remedies. It would seem to me that this is the kind of a livelihood limit in the town core. However, we can't have people drinking on property that doesn't belong to the bar. So the option for me would be to find some way to ethically come to a transfer of ownership to the thing. So I'm not going to support this. I prefer to see the town lively and things happening, so, anyway.
Counselwoman Clancy?
Well, I think, just some of the things I wouldn't have said, but the real issue is liability. And when you build something on land that belongs to the town, it puts us in a huge liability issue, and that really is the issue. I do agree. And I had other residents say to me, boy, it looks really nice. There's probably another place to build, perhaps out in front of the business or along the sides within the property lines. But for us, the liability is far too great to leave it sit the way it is. Thank you.
Counselwoman Lipsky?
I have nothing.
Counselwoman Elrod?
Yes, I'd like to know a legal point. The boundaries of a liquor license have essentially nothing to do with the town of Cave Creek. You can put whatever boundaries you want on your liquor license. That's not an issue here, that's not a town issue. The town issue is who owns the property, what was done on the property, and was it safely and properly constructed and inspected?
I find myself in the same position as Counselman Bunch. And this is going to, it sounds like I was going to say, but I think the Vice Mayor's motion is totally appropriate in this circumstance. My main concern here is liability. If something were to happen on this structure, heaven forbid, the town would be in a very precarious legal position. Karen, the role, please.
Counselwoman Esser?
Yes.
Counselman Bunch?
No.
Counselwoman Clancy?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lamar?
Yes.
Counselwoman McGuire?
Yes.
Counselwoman Lipsky?
Yes.
Mayor Francia?
No. By a vote of five to two, the motion clearly passes. Thank you, counsel. We'll go to Agenda Item Number One and continue with the rest of the agenda. Agenda Item Number One, council discussion, first reading of ordinance number two, Gando two thousand fifteen dash five, zero five, creating a land exchange between the town of Cave Creek and the Hornetoe Restaurant property by abandoning a small portion of the Desert Awareness Park for purposes of a non-motorized trail amusement. Mr. Corrigan.
Thank you, Mayor. Bambi's actually been working on this project for about a year and a half, if not longer, to bring this to the council's attention. Quite a lot of work and research and, in certain copies, assigning the property, negotiating the property ownership, the depth widths, the abusements, the types of abusements that I'm electing to give that report. I believe that's a good crisis either way.
Bambi?
Good evening, Mayor. Members of the council, thank you for this opportunity to speak to you tonight. The ordinance before you allows for a much-needed, non-motorized pathway at the property known as the Hornetoe Restaurant. The Hornetoe is located in the area of the town that has an increasing amount of pedestrian and equestrian traffic, especially during special events. The town's recent transportation city has identified this area as part of the entertainment district, and where a lot of the special events in the town are centered. The proposed land exchange will provide a much-needed, safe walkway for pedestrians and equestrians alike. I'll entertain any questions that you may have.
Questions from council? The Counselwoman McGuire question?
Yes, Bambi, thank you. You've worked on this for a long time. What kind of access does this allow pedestrians to have that they did not formally?
The picture probably says the most about what's happening here. The Hornetoe property, the yellow lines around the property are the current property lines. The red lines would be the proposed property lines. The access, the property to the north of that, in the yellow lines, is also owned by the Hornetoe. And that property, if this exchange is approved, would then become part of the town's Desert Awareness Park. And the access for equestrians would come from the back of that property, or those would be the south property lines of the property to the north, onto the Hornetoe property along the west side, on the other side of their fence, not through their parking area, and through the front area. And there'll be a walkway, of course, that would have to be built. Or they could cross over there and go on to the Buffalo Chip and Hogs and Horses, or where they need to go. The pedestrian pathway, obviously, and we go on the front. The exchange, the property to the east of the Hornetoe there, it's kind of a triangular shaped piece wood, which is part of the desert, is currently part of the Desert Awareness Park. And that property would become part of the Hornetoe property in exchange for the property to the north of the Hornetoe and for the walkway, non-motorized easements along to the west side of the property and the south side of the property.
So what I think you're telling us is that this would allow a much safer easement for equestrians to some, to do some more important business.
Absolutely.
Instead of having to come along Cave Creek Road where cars and horses sometimes don't mix very well.
Absolutely.
There's a real possibility of equestrians being able to come up the wash and then access this portion of town in a relatively safe way.
I've been looking for years, Counselwoman Elrod, I think you, um, Counselwoman Elrod. I've been looking for years on getting easements throughout that wash, from the schoolhouse road trail easement to the back of town for that very reason, for equestrians. Some equestrians still like to go through town, but I like to give people that aren't as brave with their horse another option. And this, to me, provides a much safer route into town if you have equestrians.
Thank you. Question, Counselwoman Esser?
Bambi, what does it do for the Awareness Park?
It actually will add property, more usable property, to the Desert Awareness Park. First of all, by allowing legal passage through the wash onto the, up to the east of the, you know, going east.
You need to lay in a little point.
To the, um, the actual entrance to the Desert Awareness Park is off of Brumair, so it's quite a ways down. But the park actually comes up to that property.
I got one.
Hey, but Dylan, I got a pistol to cut the chisel laser off.
I swear you're always happy.
Are you carrying it?
No, it's not on me now.
The wash here is currently owned by the Hornetoe. This is the actual whole property here is. So the trail would begin here and go on through to the Desert Awareness Park entrance, which is over by the building supply. So you have the Indian Village, the Hideaway, the Circle K property, the retail center of the town, I think it goes quite a way. So it would have a lot.
So the Desert Awareness Park gets land that is more usable? It's not in the wash?
In my opinion, yes.
Thank you.
Any final questions from council? Questions?
Yeah, I do, as you go from on the north side that Jeff was giving, where the yellow comes out, then on the, on the north side. Oh, right. And you get right to that point, looks like some property owner in the very corner, just east of it, yeah, keep coming down, right there. Is it possible to go and have folks walk all the way from Verneesh, all on that, that north side, and get to that, where you're pointing that piece of property left there?
Yes.
Can they, or do they have to walk into the dirt?
Well, they'd have to walk in the wash. As you can see, these parcels here are.
Our own, yes, okay.
Any final questions from council? Anything else, Bambi?
Currently, we are, we have about two weeks left on the title status report to make sure that all properties are clear title before it can actually take place. But there will be a gap between now and that. I'm surprised they probably talked about more if you have further questions on that. But that is the only way this transaction can happen is if it's free and clear, the title's very clear.
Okay. Vice Mayor?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council. When this originally started, and Bambi and I have been talking about it for a long time, property that we own goes across the wash and then has that little piece of property up above. Using it for a horse trail, it's going through private property, which doesn't work. The wash is not any good for my business. I can't build in it or do anything. So what we were actually trying to accomplish is trading the wash and the property behind it, straightening out the lines, because Bambi's going along right there, which we are already using. You can see where it goes from the shops down to Dr. Baker's building, that curved part, that part's already parking lot anyway. It's just actually making a legal, straightening out the lines, straightening out some lines in the front, giving us a little more behind the lounge headed towards the wash. So I'm going to be able to add on to the lounge for entertainment reasons, make it advanced more, whatever. The permit's perfect. Yeah, as Bambi was addressing with, after we've been surveying, surveying, gone back and forth on everything, we've given the town the easement, put the bicycle path and the pedestrian pathway in front of the Hornetoe. We've already cleaned a lot of it out. And as far as the title goes on the Hornetoe, it goes back to nineteen seventy-six between my father and Ed Shaleen. My father's deceased, Ed Shaleen has no paperwork on it. And we are using the same title company that the town uses, and they have instructed us on what to do. And it's going to be about two weeks until we get the paperwork, and all the clouds on the title will be taken care of. Just stuff that wasn't recorded correctly.
Questions from Mr. Price? Okay. Thanks, Mr. Price. Thank you. There is public comment on Agenda Item Number One. Karen?
But I won't bring this up to council. Counselwoman Bunch? Move to approve first reading of ordinance number two thousand fifteen dash zero five, an ordinance of the mayor and town council of the town of Cave Creek, Maricopa County, Arizona, creating a land exchange between the town of Cave Creek and the Hornetoe property by abandoning a small portion of the Desert Awareness Park, address thirty-eight oh five, on North Verneesh Road, APN number two-one-six dash zero seven dash zero five three, and a portion of the town right-of-way located in front of the Hornetoe property for the purpose of implementing a non-motorized trail easement to be located on a portion of the parcel addressed sixty-seven thirty-eight, East Cave Creek Road, APN number two-one-six dash zero six dash one six nine, commonly known as the Hornetoe Restaurant property in exchange for a portion of the Desert Awareness Park and a portion of the town right-of-way.
Karen? God, you're making me hungry.
I know, but that's what I was going to say. That's what I was going to say.
I was going to say, I think, in the future, when we have transactions with restaurant owners who have really good fried chicken and ribs, we should have them bring some for everybody, as opposed to.
I am remiss.
Yeah. Anyway, this is, this is a good thing. I know you've been working on your children when you first wanted to start, approach this project, and I think it's, it's good that it's finally happening.
Councilman McGuire, or Councilman Linsky, you have a second?
And I didn't know. I was hoping to, but they got.
They, they, they got it on McGuire. Councilman McGuire, you have a second?
Bambi, you've been working on this for a while. You've managed to come out with a agreement. Mr. Price is very happy with it. It helps to legalize the land that he's using. It works out well for him. It works out well for the town, not only equestrians, but also hikers. I look forward to the point at which people are going to be able to come up that wash, which is not usable for any kind of buildings, whether they be equestrians or hikers, and have access to the businesses in the town. Go in there, have a beer, go home. The horse can be drunk, but I hope the riders are.
Councilman Linsky?
Bambi, yes, with everything that you bring to council, it's just so thoughtful and well-presented and right and good for the town and for the citizens of the town. I just want to thank you, as, as always, for the work that you do, and Mr. Price for your cooperation. I, I think it's a, it's a great thing.
Next, Bambi?
Bambi, I, I remember a day when we were both young, and we were riding along trails, and what's been said, I would just, you know, you, this is another little step, another little piece in your dream, and I, I think you're giving a lot up here.
Councilman Esser?
This is the first reading, and the title will be clear by the time we have the second reading.
It should take about two weeks, Jeff.
It's a win-win.
Got a forward question.
Thank you, Bambi. Thank you, Jeff. Since eliminates any liabilities in the backyard now, that helps too. But I think it will be as quiet as, and anybody goes down with it, they'll always just call me and be the mother, no. Thanks.
In agreement with everything my fellow councilmembers are saying, Bambi and Mr. Price. All those in favor of the motion to signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes clearly have it, that's a seven zero vote. Agenda item number two, council discussion on approval of a site plan for case SDR-15-2, AutoZone, a name for one commercial retail building. Applicant is CTG Applied Sciences, Nick Brown, presenting.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Next item is a site plan review case, as you stated, SPR1502, for an AutoZone retail store comprising approximately 7,147 square feet. The parcel is actually on a 10-acre site in total, adjacent to the Tractor Supply Company Store, which is currently under construction, at the northwest corner of Cave Creek Road and Olleson. The applicant has conformed to all the requirements of the zoning ordinance. The planning commission unanimously recommended approval of this case, five oh seven. I think the only things that the planning commission identified, which is in the net, were three considerations, one of those being the potential for replacement of a screen wall along the, one of the sides of the loading, the loading area. The applicant has provided that under revised site plan that you have before you. The planning commission also requested additional trees at the southeast corner of the building. The applicant has provided five additional trees at that location, the commission's request. The other concern was with pink colors and architecture, the commission felt strongly that the applicant should reconsider some of their elements of the proposed storefront and building. The applicant took that to heart and provided a new rendering, architectural rendering, which you got before you tonight. I didn't bother providing the old one for your, for your consideration. So with that, staff can answer any questions you may have. In general, so this is the Tractor Supply parcel, it's going adjacent to that, there would be a potential three additional pads in the future, which would come back through a separate site plan review in the later term. So, thank you, Mayor.
I have a single question, page 71 of 213, section E, site plan review criteria number one, specifically the last whole sentence, "The project is within close proximity to Town of Cave Creek Water Service." It says, following, "However, the parcel was located with the City of Phoenix Water Franchise Area." What does that mean? Is that a qualifier?
Here's, Mayor, members of council, the story, it's a little long at this point, but I'll try to do my best to be brief.
Give the full sentence synopsis.
Sure.
Are we okay?
The, the City of Phoenix Water Franchise Area extends to Cave Creek Highway at this location. The City of Phoenix can provide water. We do have a, an agreement with the City of Phoenix at this time to provide all the emergency, the fire flow water for the site in, in general. The City of Phoenix will provide the domestic water until such time as the town and City of Phoenix can maybe work out an arrangement or agreement to acquire the ability to provide water in that area.
Okay. Good, that's why you supplied water.
Correct.
Okay. Councilor question?
Yeah, Luke, this is on page 103, conditions of approval out of number seven, if the town the owner, if the building permit, application of landscape plan included, disposition of salvage plant, blah, blah, blah. That was in the minutes, and I think all of the questions that the planning commission asked have been addressed by the applicant.
Mayor, members of council, that is correct.
Were there any concerns about the colors? Can you address that for a minute?
Sure. The, the original building, both architecture and paint colors of the building, the commission really wanted the applicant to consider where they're going to be located, the context, architecturally, where they would be located, and try to blend in with the aesthetic of the surrounding. As you know, we cannot enforce aesthetic rules and regulations that is in form to, we don't give them a list of paint colors that they can choose from, so on and so forth. So the applicant is, what the building was to, to what they're actually proposing now and will ultimately build is a much more, let's use the word, palatable.
Did they have agreed to it?
Yes, they have.
I think I have one more question, but I can't find it. I think the commissioners regarding the color, one of the, the surface committee.
The, once again, the original proposal was.
To him, the circus has been in Cave Creek for many years, but that's all I have. I can't find the other question, and Luke, they, they answered, they agreed, and you heard the things that he asked.
That's right.
Additional questions from council?
I have, I'm just curious, the footprint of the, of the building, do you know, have any idea how it compares to the average for Olleson?
I think the applicant could speak to that. I, I know they've got requirement, different, different type of requirements when they look at site analysis, but I can't say that.
Additional questions from council? Mr. Brown?
Not Mr. Brown.
You're Mr. Brown. He's Mr. Brown.
My name is Nathan Petrello with CTG Applied Sciences. This is Nick Brown. There's actually no auto with my firm, so I'm kind of taking over, but he's here to help me along.
Thank you.
We're here to answer questions, and specifically the square footage, it is a standard issue AutoZone, it's, it's their new build footprint, so it's the same as all the other Autozones, the new ones that you would see. Luke, we, we did listen to planning and zoning, we changed the colors, we worked closely with staff, so we're in agreement, we made those changes. If you have any other questions, if you have any.
Councilman McGuire question?
Yes, I'm looking over the literature that you have here, and one of the statements you have here is that the relationship to the surrounding property, the proposed development expects to have a positive impact on the surrounding area and neighborhood. Would you explain how that applies to the building in the region?
The, the positive impact is with, you know, the TSC that's there, this, this is going to enhance that. Right now, it's, it's obviously just an empty pad. This is going to bring sales tax revenue, it's going to kind of complement the TSC as a complete retail center. It's, it's an area that we're hoping that the town is looking for this retail activity, which is exactly what it is.
I think that you've met all the requirements, and that's all you're legally required to do, but I do hope that you'll work with staff and work with the town to make this the most beautiful, aesthetic, desert-friendly establishment you can, and then, having done that, generate lots of business.
Absolutely.
Anything else you'd like to say?
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. We'll go to a public hearing on agenda item number two. Ms. Karen?
I have no speakers, Mayor.
Do you wish to speak on this issue? Come back to council. Thank you, Councilmember.
Move to approve the site plan for case SPR-15-02, AutoZone for one commercial retail building totaling approximately 7,147 square feet.
Second. Motion has been made, or say it, Councilman McGuire?
The area is appropriate for commercial endeavors, has been since the first time I saw the corner, when I was 17 years old, filling a boat to Bart's Lake in which I had money to buy in the corner like that. I support this.
Councilman Esser, you have a second?
Enough said. I think they're a welcome addition to the town. Good luck, and if you work with staff, it's a good staff, so we're glad to have you here.
Anything else from council? Ms. Karen? All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes clearly have it. Thank you, council. For that, I have a seven to zero vote. Agenda item number three, council discussion and recommendation of the Department of Liquor License and Control approval of a new number 12 restaurant liquor license for the village place holding out out. See, Wayne Biggs has a village coffee shop. Has requested by the rate of Marina Matasoff.
Mayor, members of council, we have this on the regular agenda because it's a new property that's never had a liquor license before, but the property's been posted for the 20-day period. We've received no comments in favor of or opposed to it. It's been routed to staff, and there were no objections from staff. The staff has recommended that council recommend to the liquor board approval of this. There haven't been any objections to it, and it seemed appropriate, and they've complied. It does not mean that this gives them any right to build without a permit or expand into any other private property. It's simply a schematic that generally lays out the liquor license area for that property. With that, thanks.
Yes, thank you for pointing that out. Questions from council? There is public comment on this cycle. Chair, you have seen, Councilman McGuire?
Yes, I make a motion to recommend approval of the Department of Liquor License and Control for a new number 12 restaurant liquor license for the village coffee shop as requested by the agent Marina Matasoff.
Second. Motion made, or second, Councilman McGuire?
They have great crates.
Oh, okay.
And it's wonderful also, that's happy, because this is coming into that particular establishment. Indigo Grove is going there, there's a possibility of a pizza place going in there, so we're beginning to see the development of what is a beautiful addition to Cave Creek.
Stage Creek Village, or something.
Indeed.
Next, Karen.
Yeah, I recall when, when we had a little, little bitty place, it was like as small as a closet on the back end of Stage Coach Village, and then the next time I came back, we did stories in for Cave Creek, and she was getting started, and now she's got a great place, and is doing good, and this, she's a real, really great gal, and I'm happy to second this motion.
To put assets at the top. All those in, is there anyone else? Okay. All, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes clearly have it, that would be a seven zero vote. Agenda item number four, council discussion and authorization of an expenditure to Desert foothills community association for the budget amount of $10,000 for yesterday's rodeo. How about you?
Mayor, council, the town supports a number of activities through the year. This is one of those activities, Cave Creek Yesterday's, the rodeo. We provide $10,000 a year for this. Let me get back, I've got things that's actually listed in our packet. I'm actually going to have Tracy speak, and she's the recipient, our, our, the sponsorship of the town for PICA.
And before we have Tracy speak, a quick question.
Yes, sir.
Of the things given to the town for the sponsorship, the 32nd commercial played before the start of each show provided, is that a commercial about the town?
I don't think we.
Tracy, do you know?
It would be your commercial if you provided one.
Okay, we, the town doesn't have one.
It'd be great to see us promoting the town out at the rodeo.
That could be a fun project, Mark.
I suspect.
We've had that time before to do that, so it comes out.
Okay, fine. Be happy to help. I'd be happy to join you on that one. Okay, any other questions, if not Tracy? Did you wish to speak on this?
Hello again, Tracy Casal, president, Cave Creek Pro Rodeo. I'm not sure, it's not that I wanted to wish to speak, it's more of a, a thank you on behalf of the association for your continued support. Cave Creek Yesterday's started in 1977, I wasn't around then, and it's grown to the most anticipated event this town has, and we continue to grow it, and we are turning people away at the gate that, I mentioned before, we sold out, our Saturday night performance before the ticket was even opened, so people that have been coming for years with their money in their hand were shocked that it was sold out. The support on the front end, the support on the front end is a revenue that helps us get this event off the ground. We are about 125,000, give or take, depending on the year, to produce this event for the town, including the parade, including the mutton busting, all that extra for your activities. So your help is, is greatly appreciated, and just because there's some people that weren't here last year or the other years that I've been up here. Desert foothills community association is our 501(c)(3) nonprofit corporation. It's a registered Arizona corporation. So with that being said, every donation that is made to what is the DFC, the acronym, is a tax deductible. Cave Creek Pro Rodeo is our rodeo association. Everyone that's a member is a member of Cave Creek Pro Rodeo under the DFC. We produce Yesterday's. I know there's a lot of words there, but sometimes people want to know who to write the check to, so you'd want to write the check to Desert foothills community association. And Peter, your last year's gift letter for, for the town from us, for your accountant. Thank you. Any questions?
Refresh us on the dates, Tracy.
The kickoff weekend is going to be March 19th. The kickoff weekend includes your historic parade, the kids' mutton busting, and the kickoff dance. There was a present worth for you in the package.
I can't exactly.
Easter. It's still.
You're asking.
Easter, Easter fell on our weekend, the, Easter fell on our weekend. Am I breaking all the rules? I don't need to promote, I'm sorry. So we moved it to, there's a two week between kickoff and the rodeo. April 1st, 2nd, and 3rd will be yesterday's rodeo performances. So these patches were for all of you to wear of Yesterday's.
Cool.
They're brand new this year. And there was one, it's not a big present.
They're less than $25.
I want to see these on you out at rodeo.
Okay, there's public comment on agenda item number four. Do you agree with this, Max, or council? Councilman McGuire, thank you.
Move to authorize the expenditure to Desert foothills community association, budget amount of $10,000 for yesterday's rodeo.
Second. Vice Mayor, just a second. Councilman McGuire?
Yeah, for everything Tracy said, that's all that needs to be said.
Vice Mayor Lamar?
Great tradition, Cave Creek, we need to keep up the support.
Anything else? Anything else from council?
Tracy works hard. Thank you, Tracy. You're a real credit to the community.
Thank you.
And I still owe you a shot at a few of Tracy on some... Ms. Carey, the rules of this is financial.
Councilman Bunch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clancy?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lamar?
Yes.
Councilman McQuire?
Yes.
Councilman Lipsky?
Yes.
Phil Vanessa?
Yes.
Mayor Francis?
Yes, five voters on the approval, we're completely fast to the council. I'll just pray for five minutes, council. Okay. Okay. You said... Okay, council is back in session. Agenda item number five, I have to read legal counsel for advice here. I've been advised by the director of planning that the applicant, in agenda item number five, lives in Washington State, is not present, and no one here to represent her.
Mayor, Ian, were they, was she aware of this?
Actually, I spoke with the applicants last week. We had talked about this date, and we put this forward. I'm trying to confirm with them last week, asked if they've been having representation or said they couldn't have down here. I never got back.
Mayor, you can proceed.
Okay, council, let's see that. Council discussion and approval of a request by Roy and Penny Jewett to reimburse development fees they paid to the town of Cave Creek in an amount of $17,803 on October fifteenth, two thousand and twelve. Ian?
Thank you, Mayor. I didn't want to belabor the point in my note to you, I included all of the interaction between myself and the Jewets, as well as the ordinance that governs the application of development fees and any refunds. The Jewets applied for a building permit, as you could see in their statements several years ago, through some hardships, they were not able to build. They did build a site wall that's still in place on the property. Once the permit was expired, they asked if they could not to get reimbursement of development fees. In reviewing the development fee ordinance, it falls to the planning director to make that decision. I didn't feel that I had the ability to refund their fees. Told them so, they disagreed. I discussed it with legal counsel at two different firms, and said we want them to have due process, and due process is to bring their request to the town council, so it's not just up to me, but to bring it public for discussion. So, I'm happy to answer any questions that they might have about this.
Question, vice chair, staff, vice mayor Lamar?
Yes, well, actually, to council, okay, having, having gotten your advice, is the advice, does the ordinance support a refund of the fees under this situation?
Neither your ordinance, nor were you to abandon your ordinance and authorize the return. State statute would require you to take general funds to replenish your development fees, fund your development fund, the exact amount you've already reimbursed. So, if you were to go against your ordinance, which I don't advise you to do, you would then have to replenish your development fee fund with general funds in the amount of...
Seventy thousand, David.
Thank you.
Oh, Councilman McGuire, question?
When the Jewets bought this property, was it relatively frisked property and completely national state?
Councilman McGuire, it was.
Yes, I've been out and I've looked at that property, and the wall that you spoke of, there's grading there, attempt to put in the driveway, so the property is considered a bit altered.
What?
Additional questions from council? Yes, council, answer.
Ian, if I'm not mistaken, reading the correspondence, the gentleman built homes for a living, is that correct?
That's basically it.
I'm assuming that wherever, whatever state it's in, you know, it's about development fees and...
The Jewets in their letter addressed that they tried to hire local contractors, but they're not familiar with state workers on those processes. They did pay the development fee with the issuance of the permit. They did have two different contractors that believe over the history of the project, and eventually found that they could not build, so...
And obviously timed, probably several years?
In at least a couple of years, at least.
Thank you. Some questions from council.
Ian, maybe I missed this. If I did, I apologize in the paperwork, but had a, had a property, to your point, Councilman McGuire, not been touched, changed whatsoever, would that have, would that have an impact on their request?
Councilman Lipsky, I believe that one factor, the other factor is to ask for the refund in the order to the expeditious manner once the permit had been expired.
Okay, thank you. Additional questions from council?
Oh.
Councilman McGuire, question?
The development fees that were collected a few years ago are the same as they would be today?
Councilman Clancy, how does the council say or not? The town, the town has determined that the development fees applying to water and wastewater are now capacity charges, so if the same property was to be developed today, the fees for water and wastewater would not be paid, it would be a fee, a development fee of approximately $500 for some kind of growing covered trails and public facility.
And then back then, it was seventeen thousand, and they didn't build anything?
And that was based on the water heater size and all this proposed.
A couple of questions, I don't know if it pertains to you, Ian, or to you, Mr. Smith. I have a couple of questions, I'm not sure who should answer. Does a, what did you say, was it a site wall?
Yes, there is, the property was originally for some kind of growing in the site, because there is some contour to the site, so there's a wall built and still in place as they developed the driveway. The house was to have a garage beneath it, so there was some cut down and retaining wall put in place, and that wall remains.
Okay, there's a site wall. Does that translate to a building?
Mayor, it's not a building. It was part of the building permit. It was specifically forcing the image, growing and the wall.
The reason I'm asking the question is, as I read through the documentation on the eligibility for refund, it makes specific mention of building, which is a structure. If my understanding is correct, there is no structure?
That's correct.
Okay, all right. Additional questions? Anything else from you, Ian?
Yes.
Okay, there is public comment on agenda item number five. Comment?
I would simply say, Mark's staff would not charge additional building permits after his first, please correct me, Ian, the first initial building request that he did for Cawhaw Springs, Cawhaw Ranch, he did not have to pay a second time, even though his permits were expired. So, how can he turn around and, and not give these people back their money? I mean, give or take, again, I think we're talking about selective processes here.
Interesting, that did you wish to speak? Okay.
Carrie Smith, Cave Creek resident, I just have a couple of questions. If the development fees are not refunded, do they convey, should this couple sell the lot? In other words, would it count that they paid fees and therefore enhanced the value of the lot, even though the fees that they paid are much higher than a new owner would have to pay, it would still give whoever purchased their property some advantage? That's the first question. The second question, I really wasn't clear that the town, if we gave them, if the town gave them back the money, the town would then have to reimburse a development fund that the town has for the total amount of those resources. What is the development fund used for? Is that to compensate for expenses that are associated with the development of that lot? If it is, then presumably whoever purchased the lot from them would then have to defray those expenses when they built, and when they needed whatever infrastructure that development is associated with. So, those are my two questions, and I think that, well, many expenses, it seems to me that the town, or the town staff incurred to service their activities should certainly be deducted from any development funds they paid, and then some reasonable compromise, maybe, if the questions of enhancement of the value of their property associated with paying for something in advance, or these other issues associated with what the fund is used for can be addressed. Thank you.
First question, connect with him.
The first question is, the development fee statute has been painfully modified over the last ten years, and as Ian pointed out, all the jurisdictions are abandoning the development fees for, to go to capacity charges. The homeowners associations are the ones who are behind the development fee statute. It is to limit the amount that cities and towns can charge developers. They are obligated to segregate the funds that they receive from developers and to use only for the uses for which the fees were paid. Your ordinance does not allow refund, and so there's very little, your zoning administrator or your manager or your town could do in light of the ordinance. If you didn't have the ordinance, you could make the decision to return the funds, but the state statute would require you to replenish the development fee account that had been reimbursed. And so, regrettably, that's what the statute says. Now, I don't remember the second question.
The second question is whether or not a subsequent buyer of the property...
I don't think so. Because a sudden buyer will come in and have to pay water, sewer, capacity, what development fees do you have now?
In this particular case, this lot would not have the capacity charges applied to it.
Okay. Because the fees have been paid previously?
No, because the, this, capacity charges apply when a property uses town water for sewer. In this case, it would be septic and probably well. They would, if you're saying that they would have to pay...
Yes.
They definitely have to pay building permit fees for whatever they propose.
Yes.
And you're saying that they would have to pay the additional development fee of parks and trails and public services?
Yes, because they use them. I mean, they use them, and that's why. And now, do you, do you require a mandatory connection to be for septic?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor Lamar?
I have a question.
Oh, well, we're all...
I have a question. I'm trying to understand, if they pay $17,000, when you ask for that payment, if they're not hooking up with the water, which is what I just heard, and if they are not hooking up, how can you charge them like development fee that they're not using?
Councilman Clancy, that comes from the... Councilman, that comes from the directive of the consultant when the town adopted the previous development fees, that, uh, development fees for water and wastewater would apply to everyone regardless of location in the town. Since we revised the, revisited the development fees last year, uh, the consultant said that we would now only apply capacity charges to those properties that use town sewer and water. So it was a different time when the town did apply development fees for water and sewer, whether it was...
How's that even legal? How's that even, I mean, and I gotta go back to my experience in another area. When we went to the state for development fees with developers at the time, could get it put on for schools or property at the time, but normally, when you're asked to do an impact fee, it was on my understanding, is those services were being provided to you? Not that you were asked to pay for services that somebody else was going to get, particularly to their two hundred seventeen thousand dollars. What would be the best way to handle this, to allow for some remuneration for these folks who obviously need the money, um, never built on it? And yeah, they can sell property, but it just hardly seems fair to me. And I'd stop putting you on the spot, Ian, because you, you have to live with the rules and regulations that are there. What can we bill do as a council?
Mayor members of council, you could amend your ordinance. I mean, Ian's right.
Right.
They, uh, who did you, which consultant did you use?
Tischler, yes.
They've made billions. Uh, I mean, you have very, you, cities and towns across the state have very complicated development fee ordinances. I represent relatively smaller cities and towns. All of them are abandoning development fees because they're too complicated, and it's more expensive to implement, and they're going to these capacity charges. Right now, your hands are tied because your ordinance doesn't allow refund.
Right.
You could amend the ordinance, and I even suspect you could try to, you could probably amend it retractively. But then you have to address the statute, and I need to think about that now that you've converted to capacity charges. If indeed you were to refund these, and I don't know what my answer is, but I think, um, the plain reading of the state statute is you need to refund that, that category of funds. Why? Because, because the developers required it. They, they, they're the ones, the home builders associations are the ones you should blame. They're the ones who are, who are causing you to do this to your own orders.
Right, but the point is, is this is not an HO, it wasn't an HOA, was it? I mean, it's, it's, it's us as a town, and I think that, that we are...
Because, because the ordinance, because the home builders association imposed this, this ordinance on you.
Oh, on us.
And so, if you wish to refund, you have to amend your ordinance, and then I have to sit down creatively, try to figure out how you wouldn't have to replenish this fund.
And/or if, if a certain amount was taken out, if there's a sense of they didn't approve it or they did approve it or put a portion of it with the, at least for me, as someone who sits on council, to be fair. It sounds like it's time that we dig into policies and procedures and other things anyway that I don't think council's probably done in a really long time, to see what is fair.
I have one last question.
Sure.
Sure. Uh, Ian, I have a question as to the date of the application, the payment of the fees. And if that application, after this two or two-year-plus time period expired, is there supposed to be some activity, and you did some minor work with the footing of the wall, and then you decided you didn't want to run here?
Councilman, yes, in March of two thousand twelve, um, they agreed to terms with the builder. They issued a building permit October of two thousand twelve. They went through machinations with two different builders. They ended up doing some work on the site, non-inspections, uh, the site walls were part of the permit, and then decided that they couldn't proceed and build.
And that permit expired?
Uh, I believe it did.
Is there a timeline on it?
Yes, it's included in your documentation, January fourth, two thousand fourteen.
Two years.
So here we are in fifteen...
Okay, we need a motion. That's a question. Have a motion. This is for a discussion only. Motion to authorize the reimbursement of the vote, fees in the amount of seventeen thousand, three dollars, to go ahead and enjoy it. Second. I can support this, if, if we violate the state statute, we're gonna have to reimburse it, but violate is our own ordinance. We, we need to follow our ordinances, and if we want to change our ordinance, there's a process to do that. If we issue before us now, it's whether we follow the law or whether we don't. So I think it's pretty clear cut, we're off the issue. Did you have the second, Councilman?
Ian, um, Ian, the, the same thing, I mean, there's not a methodology for getting this done easily. I feel bad for them that they paid that money, um, I feel bad for them they couldn't build in Cape Creek. You know, I mean, it's just, it's just not feasible.
Councilman, I...
I agree with what's been said, unfortunately, we can't help them. Is that going through a lengthy process? And we're not prepared to do that at this point.
Counselor, the question?
I could not be very prepared to make a change to an ordinance that has changed anyway. I would be more inclined to want to table this until we could go about doing what's fair myself. Because things have changed, and they've changed dramatically, and, uh, I just, that's, that's where I am, so...
Counselor Lipsky?
I feel like I want to try to do something to help, but I don't think I can. And as, uh, as Mayor Lamar said, we're here to decide whether or not we followed along. I think that's a pretty clear-cut decision.
Counselor McGuire?
Choose your builders carefully.
Counselor? Yes, sir. I, I agree with everything my fellow council members are saying. Is there any point, uh, is there any legal point in that no structure was built? No, no building has been built? That would, where we could refund this and still be in compliance with our own ordinance?
Leaving aside compliance with the state statute regarding replenishment of the account. Mayor, your, your zoning administrator interprets the provision you're reading differently than you do. And as I read that in full context, it does use the word "build", but it follows a sentence where it talks about a development, building permit for which construction has been initiated, and clearly, there has been some construction on the site, including, including grading and, is it a wall they built? And so, I can tell you that there's case law out of Chandler that says curbs are structures. I mean, and so the problem is, I do, if you wish, I could try to interpret that broadly, but I, I can't. I, I think, I don't think that applies, because I think building here is meant to mean anything for which construction was initiated. And in Arizona, I think a building, we've all used the term "structure", I can show you cases where curbs are structures. And so I, I do believe they didn't satisfy seed, and they didn't...
That's the, I have to add here.
Okay.
Thank you, Counselor. The rule, please, Karen?
Councilman, fancy?
I know.
Vice Mayor Lamar?
Yes.
Councilman McGuire?
About, uh, yes, it is to authorize the refund. How was this...
It's to, it's to deny, 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 my question is?
Yes.
Not? Yes.
Counselor Lipsky?
Yes.
Counselman Esser?
I need clarification on the motion, but a no is saying we are not going to refund the money?
No, I think, no, I think we got it messed up. Let's, yes, and that's my fault.
No, it's not your fault. Uh, Karen, would you reissue the, uh, call of the rule? A no vote is to deny the motion, this was to authorize.
Yes.
Councilman Fancy?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lamar?
No.
Councilman McGuire?
Do you understand it? Yeah.
Counselor Lipsky?
I'm listening to you now, Steve, right?
Yes.
Okay. No.
Wait, Esser?
No.
Councilman Bunch?
Deny reimbursement.
Vice Mayor Fancy?
Uh, no, Councilman McGuire, how did Councilman McGuire...
No.
No, oh.
To deny reimbursement.
By vote six of one, motion is denied. Thank you, Councilman. Council discuss, six, council discussion and authorization for mayor to execute declaration of environmental restriction for properties with institutional controls?
Mayor and council? Uh, between the town of Cape Creek and Arizona Department of Environmental Quality, ADQ four, VRP site code zero seven zero three by five, tax E O zero.
Tom Attaker?
Mayor and council, we've come, has been working with ADQ, uh, since I believe two thousand six on the declaration of environmental use restrictions. The door, it's under its voluntary mediation program. Uh, this stems from the town's use of mine tailings, uh, as a sub, as a sub base for roads. Five roads specifically, fifty-second street, about thirty-two hundred and forty-something feet, fifty-first street, about twenty-five hundred and sixty-something feet, Rockway Hills Road, about fifteen hundred and a feet, Old Stage Roads, fifty-second street, about forty-seven hundred and seventy feet, and Morning Style Road, about three thousand, three hundred and a feet. Essentially, they had a penis mine, they used the, the tailings. Even though they completed the program, uh, for mediation back in two thousand six, when they still tested, they were still testing for us, nickel and lath. Uh, what the town did was they laid out the basics on the roads, they used the tailings as a sub base, then they sealed them. For fifty-second, fifty-first, Rockway Hills, and Old Stage Road, they actually used asphalt. And for, uh, Morning Style, they actually used more GSA on those. We came to agreement with ADQ that we agreed to do this, uh, restriction. There would be no further action taken by the state regarding the town on these roads. Basically, the door says that in no way will we allow approved residential use of that land. We would not do that because it's roadways, all roadways. Uh, we would have to get ADQ if we want to modify this agreement, which we would not. And we would have to, every year, we have, uh, we have to write a written letter essentially saying that we have not committed any homes or any residential use of these properties. And it provides for ADQ to send our inspectors and walk through the roads and look at those roads to see if we have, we commit any residential use of it. So they're concerned about natural persons being affected by the contaminants, the jazz seal under the pavement. So it's been a long time coming, uh, saves us some money, saves us some litigation, saves us some efforts, and hopefully, we'll pass this easily.
Questions from council? There is public comment on the term that it means. Okay, back to council, Councilman Bunch?
I'm going to authorize the mayor to execute the declaration of environmental use restrictions for properties with institutional controls with the Arizona Department of Environmental Quality for VRP site code zero seven zero three five five dash zero zero.
Second?
Motion made, is that a counsel bunch?
Something else that needs to be done?
Return, Councilman McGuire?
This saves us a lot of money, it's what we need to be about.
Further discussion from council? All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Your ayes clearly counted, seven to zero, thank you, counsel. Sound in council discussion and first reading of ordinance zero two thousand fifteen, tax E O six, amending the town of Cape Creek town code, Title III, Administration, Chapter thirty-seven, Revenue and Finance, Section thirty-seven point zero two, Procedure Generally by Increasing Expenditure Limitations, Tom Attaker?
Uh, Mayor and council, basically, we're asking you to raise the limits to the government procurement. Uh, right now, someone might go buy an off-the-shelf item, you'd have to get that limited, twenty-five hundred dollars. Uh, we're asking you to raise that to five thousand dollars. If you buy today, if you purchase something between twenty-five hundred and five thousand dollars, you'd get two bids. We're asking to raise that to between five and fifteen thousand, excuse me, twenty-five thousand. Have, also requires anything to public works, you get three bids. Presently, it's anything over five thousand, we're asking for that to be over twenty-five thousand. And again, anything over twenty-five thousand, instead of ten thousand, we need to put a control over. Originally, you had fifteen thousand, uh, there's a gap in between what was in there, so if you alter or amend it, um, there's an ordinance, uh, increasing the fifteen to twenty-five thousand. So anything with twenty-five thousand, where do you focus? What really promotes this is the five thousand and the ten thousand dollar requirement for a council are very low. Most municipalities have it between fifteen, twenty, twenty-five thousand. Communities, I've been experienced with, had twenty-five thousand. So trying to get a little relief, a little less, uh... We had some issues in the past, people purchasing stuff that'd be at nine thousand, five hundred and something dollars, and by the time you got tax and shipping, you got over ten thousand dollars. So, um, we're looking to raise that to four, those are you folks, to twenty-five thousand. Still requires bids, still requires, well, that hasn't changed.
Questions from council? Counselman Esser?
The raise in the limits requires three bids instead of two?
Two bids for general purchases under ARS, guiding public works, requires three bids. The general, we always ask them to get three bids. I don't like salt sourcet, so we'll try to get two.
Done.
But public works is specific within the state statutes that require it. And to be honest, most of our larger purchases are public works or utilities.
Additional questions from council? Counsel, Counselman Lipsky?
Yeah, uh, it, it seems like a dramatic shift. When was the last time that, that these numbers were, were adjusted? Do you know?
No, I talked my head out of the pillow.
Never?
So nineteen eighty-six, we established it.
Additional questions from council? Anything else to comment? Your public comment on agenda item number seven? Okay, we'll go back to council. Vice Mayor Lamar?
I'll make a motion to, uh, number eight?
I have seven?
Here's a motion to a first reading of the ordinance, oh two, oh five, oh one, five, dash, oh six, an ordinance in the town of Cape Creek, Arizona, amending the town Cape Creek town code to three administration, Chapter thirty-seven, Revenue and Finances, Section seventy-three oh two, Procedure Generally by Increasing Expenditure Limitations as outlined.
Second? Motion made, is that a vice Mayor Lamar?
If, if in fact, I believe you are correct, Madam Clerk, if in fact, this, these numbers were incorporated at or about the time of incorporation, nineteen eighty-six, then I think probably the twenty-five thousand dollar limit you're talking about was in real dollars, what we were thinking about, if, if not even more. So I, I'm, I'm, I'll support it.
Counselman Esser, you have the second?
I would totally support it. Uh, we needed a world of change, and that thing was approved in whatever it was in the six or something. Different day.
Anything else from, yes, Councilman, fancy?
My other question would be, uh, this is, most should be given, is this first and final? Or is there a second reading?
There's a second reading, stand by me. Anything else from council? Uh, before we get to second reading, uh, I should probably state, um, I'm more comfortable with fifteen thousand. It's, it's got to come to council.
Why?
Well, no, I mean, that's not what the motion is for, and this is just my counsel person speaking. Uh, the rule, please, Karen, quickly?
Vice Mayor Lamar?
Yes.
Councilman McGuire?
Yes.
Councilman Lipsky?
Yes.
Councilman Esser?
Yes.
Councilman Bunch?
Yes.
Councilman Fancy?
Yes.
Mayor Fancy?
No, by vote six of one, it passes for first reading. Last of the agenda is council discussion and first reading of the ordinance two thousand fifteen, zero two thousand, fifteen dash zero, setting the magnitude of Cape Creek town code, Chapter fifty-two, Water Amending Section fifty-two point zero zero two, fifty-two point zero zero three, et cetera, et cetera, as a statement in the agenda of the evening, and provided for separate development, Tom Attaker?
Uh, Mayor and council, I, I see this as kind of a post speaking matter, but just to be clear, under the Utilities Department, uh, there was some confusion that the Utilities Manager had exclusive control of...
manager had exclusive control of personnel. Um, it's been the understanding for the ordinance, and to the town, the town manager, and who starts to pick the personnel, so to clarify that, um, removing all personnel, so the only way to hire and fire, for example, would be through the town manager. I'm also adding two checks and balances, uh, under fifty-two point oh-one-seven, uh, the water utilities manager had essentially the authority to waive suspension of the rule. I wanna have a check and balance through my office on that, to take that department edge and my authority. And on the second one would be, uh, in matters, we, we look at meter testing after C is using some involvement or refunding money, and I just didn't want to have that approach to utility manager, I wanna go through the utility manager and the finance director, because it cuts out finances, so get a lot of checks and balances. So in my mind, I just, it's clarifying personnel issue as, uh, reporting here, hundred hiring through my office, and then some checks and balances on that off, whether we're waiving or suspending rules, or changing, accepting, we've got leaders, so the financial, we'll review by the finance director.
Questions from council? Anything else, Tom Adler?
No, sir.
There's public comment on agenda item number eight, and hearing that's seen done, we'll come back to council. Uh, Councilman Bunch, thank you.
Move to give first reading of the ordinance two thousand fifteen dash zero seven, the ordinance of the mayor and town council, the town of Cape Creek, Mayor Clifford County, Arizona, amending the town of Cape Creek town code, chapter fifty-two, water, amending sections fifty-two dot zero zero two, fifty-two dot zero zero three, fifty-two dot zero one seven, fifty-two dot one oh one, and fifty-two dot three oh seven, providing for separability.
Motion? Motion made in second, Councilman Bunch?
Make the first of good sense, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Esser, you have the second.
Same answer as Councilman Bunch.
Nothing further from council, all those, uh, nothing else. All those who favor the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes clearly have it. Thank you, council. Uh, in the near future, uh, town manager, council would probably like to look at, uh, development fees, uh, how things are refunded, that's what we're thinking. Concern with the Jewish submission was, uh, caught my attention. Are our development fees getting so high that people can't afford to go to home, which has to be saved for another discussion?
I think before water and sewer, absolutely, I think, when we went to utility, capacity charges, those fees, that should be at half. My only, I didn't make a comment during the discussion, my only request was, um, if you do refund fees, I would not refund the park and the trail fees. We tend to use those, they tend to be small, but we tend to use those to be a regular rate.
And that's fine, but if so, we have to stipulate it in the ordinance, so, this council and future council.
Thank you.
Bye-bye. Motion for adjournment, council?
No.
Thank you, council.